Good evening, everyone. I'm ready to call the meeting to order. I'd ask the clerk to please call the meeting and call roll.
Action is being held on Thursday, January 9th, 2014 at 5:00 PM in the Commission Chambers regarding Penn Gaming Casino Hotel. Immediately following will be an executive session held on the fifth floor conference room regarding litigation. Roll call. Townsend?
Here.
McKeonan?
Here.
Muggia?
Here.
Maddox?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Markley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Philbrook?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Holland?
Here. Well, I want to welcome everyone back. Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday season. We have our work cut out for us for the new year, so we'll be hitting the ground running. A couple of updates. You'll notice, certainly the Commission took notice, but our fifth, our meeting at 5:00 has often been upstairs. And it will go, probably move back upstairs because it's more conducive to dialogue around a table. And our 5:00 meetings tend to be meetings where we talk about various issues and they tend not to be meetings when we take action and vote. But the reason we're down here is we made a commitment that after the first of the year, all the public meetings from the Board of Commissioners would be televised. And so with the logistics of moving the cameras down from the fifth floor between 5:00 and 7:00 o'clock, it made sense to go ahead and have the 5:00 down here on Thursdays until we complete the installation of our new equipment. So we will be, our 5:00 sessions will be televised, which probably for this first quarter will necessitate us being down here for those meetings. Our executive sessions will still be upstairs. But we're moving towards that direction. We had our first standing committee meeting the other night in the new standing committee meeting on the fifth floor, which is very nice. We're able to televise in that room now. And so really it's moving forward. I want to thank the administrator and the countless folks in our IT department and in our communications department that have been working to make that televised meetings possible. So that's why we're down here for 5:00 and will be for a few more weeks until we're complete with the installation. Another update through the new year, we are continuing to be on track with the administrator's search. The position actually formally closes next week. And I will be keeping you up to date on applicants and the process moving forward after that. I'll be meeting with the consultant at the end of the month. He will be in town. And I'll be reviewing the status of that process at the end of this month. So if you've wondered where that process is, it's on track and on time. And I feel good about that and I'll keep you posted as I have more information about that. So those are my two brief announcements. Now I want to turn it over. We have one agenda item for tonight. It is concerning the Penn Gaming Casino. I'm going to turn it over to Administrator Dennis Hayes for presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. This item comes before you on tonight's 7:00 PM meeting under the administrator's agenda. Members from Kansas Entertainment will be present. Will be available to answer questions of the Commission. The purpose of this session, however, is an opportunity to discuss with the Commission and allow you to ask questions of staff and of legal counsel of the existing development agreement and the request for an extension of time that has been made. So the Mayor has asked that we do a brief history, brief historical presentation. The Commission has seen this presentation last year when we were working on casino issues as related to charitable contributions. So if you'll indulge me for just a couple of moments, I'd ask those in the audience to take a look at the slides and we'll just walk through. Most in the room recall back in 2007 when the Senate bill authorizing gaming was passed. Moved on to a special election later that year where the voters of Wyandotte County approved casino gaming by 82%. In 2008, the five proposals were submitted by various parties for consideration. They were not approved by the state. We had a series of actions that occurred at that time. Then if we move on to 2009, we issued a new request for proposals for a destination casino group. Those Commissioners, there are three present here. The Mayor, Commissioner Muggia and Commissioner Kane remember sitting through a summer of public hearings where we had numerous public hearings and proposals submitted by various proposers and developers. We moved through that year, unified government. Eventually endorsed Penn Gaming and Kansas Entertainment as our partner under a development agreement to enter into for casino construction and operation. The state later that year finalized the selection of Penn Gaming Kansas Speedway as the casino backgrounds were completed. There was final approval in 2010. We then moved forward into 2011 where there was a very rigorous construction schedule. Lasted just over a year, many construction jobs and a very aggressive schedule to bring about one of the premier casino facilities, certainly in the state of Kansas and throughout the Midwest. In February 12, 2012, roughly two years ago, Hollywood Casino opened for its first operations. We have a development agreement with Kansas Entertainment representing the casino. One of the conditions and one of the items that the Commission at that time held with great value was that the Commission wanted a hotel that would be adjacent to the casino. This Commission, from discussions we previously had, value also having a casino hotel constructed as soon as possible. The current development agreement, and I should point out that Commissioner-at-Large Walker was on staff and involved in the actual negotiations. And I would invite him to join into the discussion tonight because he has unique knowledge of this development agreement. But simply stated, the Commission adopted the development agreement that required that Hollywood Casino commenced construction of a 250-room first-class hotel two years after the date it opened. That will be February of this year. I'm going to do now, so that's a quick history. What we want to talk about is the development agreement. And I want to go through what Jody Boating, our Chief Legal Counsel, has prepared for us. Again, this is a quick history and a summary. Next slide will be the summary that Jody has come up with for our Chief Counsel. And I'll take just a moment to read this into the record. Section 2.01 cites that within two years of the initial opening, Kansas Entertainment shall commence construction of a hotel containing a minimum of 250 guest rooms and diligently pursue the same with a commercially reasonable time. Section 13, under the penalties provision, says that Kansas Entertainment, if Kansas Entertainment fails to commence construction on or before two years later of the casino hotel, that they will be liable to the Unified Government for 1% of the lottery gaming facility revenues. If you'll note the next highlight, our Chief CFO, Lou Levin, has calculated that as of revenues for January 2014, that penalty would be roughly equivalent to $1.3 million. The matter before the Commission is a question of extension of time. Commission has all received in your agenda package a request from Penn Gaming that is a request which essentially amounts to a 90-day extension for them to continue consideration of initiating initial construction of the casino. The request was made in late December. This is the first opportunity to get it before the Commission. It does require an official resolution and approval of the development agreement in order to make any modifications amending this particular provision. In your staff package, you will find that there is a recommendation based upon the prior Commission and this current Commission's primary goal of getting a casino hotel under construction as soon as possible. And again, I want to stress that particularly to those in the audience and those listening to this broadcast, that the goal is to get a casino hotel under construction as soon as possible because all of the positive things that will do in increasing revenues for the casino and supporting the surrounding development in the Village West and generating more tourism and more revenue as well as more entertainment and destination value in the community. So with that being stated, staff is recommending, I'm recommending as county administrator, that we grant a one-time 90-day extension in response to their request. Secondly, that the penalty provisions remain unchanged and that they would remain in effect and would take effect for implementation on May 1, should the casino group make a decision not to proceed forward timely in making the steps necessary to construct the casino and make a commitment to that end. So that's the recommendation on the table. There's not action, as the Mayor indicated in this session, but rather an opportunity for the Commission to discuss and ask questions. And staff stands available to respond to any questions or issues the Commission wishes to bring forward. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for the presentation. I will say in reviewing this myself and looking at it with the staff, it's one of those issues that's relatively complicated in terms of its scope, but I don't think it's particularly controversial in terms of a 90-day extension for something as important as the hotel. So that doesn't mean it's not important. It's a very important decision. But in my reading of it, it's probably more complicated than it is controversial in terms of keeping the penalty phase intact. No one is suggesting that they should not be penalized should they choose not to build a hotel. It seems that the request is reasonable. They have been, in my estimation, they've been a good community partner thus far. And they have delivered on what they said they would do each time. So from my perspective, I think we needed to take the time to do the presentation, particularly because it's just hard to understand. But I think it's a reasonable request. The hope tonight is, we're not going to vote at 5:00. It's going to be on the agenda for 7:00. But we wanted to make sure we had ample time for questions and comment and to see if people are comfortable voting on it tonight. If folks need more time or more information, it doesn't have to be voted on tonight at 7:00, but we wanted to leave that to your discretion to decide. So any questions or comments from the Commission? Commissioner McKeonan?
Well, you know, if we keep the end in mind, the end game, the goal is to have the hotel. And given the fact that this is a fairly short delay with the penalty still in effect if they don't fulfill their provisions after this fairly short delay. And given the fact that it all happens within the same fiscal year, even with the delay, seems to me like this is something that we could move forward with easily.
Anyone else? Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. I just, my question is, and I would have liked to have heard from someone actively from the casino or with representation. I just wanted to know, because three months doesn't make that much of a difference, or 90 days doesn't make that much of a difference. But I wanted to know what are their predictions? And some, like, there has to be some kind of data that represents either they'll be ready to go in 90 days or we don't think we will be. I mean, that all matters to me in the midst of making this decision.
We have invited representatives from the casino to be here at the 7:00 meeting. So they can answer directly. I would simply point out what's been shared with staff is that they hope to have, there are two corporations involved in the ownership group. One is International Speedway Corporation. The other is Penn Gaming. This will be a substantial capital investment for the two partners to make. And it's been represented to the staff that they're hoping to see their end-of-the-year numbers and make sure they're in a strong position to invest that level of capital in a construction project of this nature. But I'll let the representatives from the casino speak to that directly when they arrive at 7:00.
Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
I just have a point of clarification. I understand the initial deadline that's currently contained in the development agreement is start of construction, which is something of a defined term. But I understand that what we're going to be asked for is a delay of 90 days for them to announce a project and a later start of construction. So could you walk us through how we would enforce the terms of the agreement if we're only going to give them a 90-day extension to start construction?
Certainly, Commissioner. In the document that you have before you, the letter from Penn Gaming, you'll find a proposed schedule that they have announced. And Commissioner Walters is correct, there's actually a delay until October for the construction commencement. The 90-day waiting period or extension that we're speaking of is the provision of the penalty. They were scheduled, we were scheduled to enforce the penalty on February 2nd and begin that process. Essentially what we're doing when we say a 90-day extension, we are extending our time to when we would start that penalty enforcement of that penalty provision and the collection of the $1.3 million to the 90-day period. Commissioner Walters is correct. They have much to do and we will know well in advance from planning and zoning as well as from our building inspection department that they're keeping on track to meet a October construction date if they so commit to that. And we will know months in advance by their submission of plans and design work that they plan to break ground in early October. I hope that answers the question, Commissioner.
Commissioner McKeonan?
Let me make sure it does for me. So if we put the May 2014 deadline in effect now, we really should know by then, if they can commit on that day, then we really should be comfortable that if they commit that day, they can break ground in October and follow that timeline. We should know enough by then that that's the only really deadline we need. Because I think this goes back to what Terrence had said a minute ago, is it's, just want to make sure that the announcement and the groundbreaking and the commencement of construction all happens within the same year.
Yes, sir. Okay.
Well, and I think that's an important question. And in my reading of this letter, and I think we can ask these questions of them as well, is if they were going to break ground on February 1st, they would have had to submit all kinds of documents and permits and all kinds of, they would have had to pay a number of fees to us to get started on construction by then. And they basically realized they weren't going to make it to do that. I think they're finishing up their due diligence. And by May 1st, they're going to have to have a firm capital commitment to commence and start pulling permits, which means paying us fees and beginning the process of building. Because as Commissioner Walters, you probably know as well as anyone up here, the buildings don't just pop out of the ground. Not one yet. But you've been on a number of projects, right, to commence construction? These architects, you know. So I think that's a valid point. So I think we have an opportunity to ask some questions tonight. I just wanted to make sure that you saw this, we could get this in front of you as soon as we could. You would see the letter that was submitted to the Administrator and you would have time to act. It's January 9th. It's not until February 2nd that this would be implemented. So if there were big red flags, we would have plenty of time. I didn't want us to back up. We have a cushion. If you all say we're not ready, we can pull this off the agenda tonight and not move forward with a vote so that you don't feel cramped for time. I don't want anybody to feel rushed about this. And because of its complexity, I could understand that. I contend still that I don't think it's a particularly controversial move because on May 1, if they say we're not going, it's not a go, we collect the money. And is that an annual penalty?
Yes, sir.
So every year we would collect $1.3 million until they built it?
It would be based upon the annual performance, the 1%, so it could change. But the contract remains unchanged and it's an annual provision. So they are incented to start construction of the hotel as soon as possible by that penalty.
That's right.
I would offer, Mayor, just two financial comments that have been discussed. There has been the suggestion made that, well, why don't we require them to put the money into an escrow account? That is a technique that we have used and we do use on a routine and regular basis as a business technique that is normally done with a developer or party that has nothing to lose and can walk away from the situation. It's a prospective transaction and therefore we ask that it be paid upfront or held in an escrow account. In this case, we have a partner that's made a long-term investment that is literally paying this community millions of dollars annually. So in good faith, staff believes that offering up this as an extension without the escrow or another obligation is a fair partnership practice that we recommend. The other thought goes back to Commissioner McKeonan's point. In setting the May 1 date, did occur as a part of discussion between staff and their development team. We felt 90 days was as long as was acceptable. And part of that reasoning is if there is a penalty, if they make the decision not to build, which we hope that's not the case. But if that were the case, we would then be able to incorporate in your budget process a new $1.3 million in this summer's consideration. So it doesn't slip your cycle. It stays within this year's budget consideration for 2015. And we would be in a good position then to place those revenues in a way that the Commission wishes to. Would also point out, I know, Mr. Bach, we've had staff calculate, there are substantial building fees involved in a project of this nature and other fees that will be paid to the Unified Government. So one may quickly, sitting at home, may say, but we need that $1.3 million. We don't need a casino. I would quickly point out that the value of construction of that facility will far exceed the $1.3 million to this community in a variety of ways, through direct tax, indirect tax, and the jobs it will create. So for those that may take a perhaps short-sighted view, I think the Commission's position, long-term in nature, to construct the hotel is a very sound policy position. And that's why we've made this recommendation to you for your consideration at 7:00.
Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. Just so I'm clear, let's say groundbreaking does take place under the October 2014 schedule. Would that state the imposition of the $1.3 million? Is that $1.3 million tied only to failure to begin construction? Or does that continue until the actual opening of the hotel?
Jody, I'll make sure that I'm correct, please, but the reading and the discussions that we've had is that it's tied to the commencement of the construction of the hotel. And Janet, if you'll take us back, it does require, I know Commissioner Walters had asked a question earlier in the week, it does look for a commercially reasonable schedule to complete. So it's not an affair where they can just break ground and then not do anything for multiple years. They're tied to a reasonable construction schedule. The answer to your question is, there would be no penalties if they, under this proposal, there would be no annual penalty if they begin construction in October. It's tied to the commencement, not the completion, is the way the original construction agreement was, the original development agreement was structured, as Mr. Walker recalls.
If they break ground and pour a foundation and decide, forget it, then they have to start paying us $1.3 million a year.
I'll defer that one to the lawyers, Mayor.
I believe that's correct.
If they did not proceed within a commercially reasonable period of time?
Yeah, 1%, I'm sorry. It's 1%, not just $1.3 million. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you. I don't mean to be going back and forth, but I wanted to know, the agreement was made, I guess, four or five years ago in regards to what would take place if there wasn't a casino. I just want to know that if we give them a 90-day buffer, will there, is there a possibility, and this may be a question for legal, that they will come back and say, can we reconstruct that contract?
There's always that possibility. Our recommendation to you that it be a one-time and then no other provisions changed, that the provisions regarding the penalty remain unchanged. And if they don't start construction or don't make a commitment to start construction on May 1, then we enforce the penalty provision. So we're not reconstructing any other portions. No other portions of the development agreement would be changed or modified. It'd simply be a 90-day extension.
Commissioner Kane?
Thank you. One of the things that I talked to Dennis about was the one-time only. And I think to what Commissioner Maddox is talking about, this is their chance. They get one chance. At that point in time, then it would go back to the lawyers and we would go back to the 1%. And this project obviously is huge. You know, but by telling them it's a one-time situation, then, and I don't like it either, but I think Dennis was correct when he talked about the goal is really to get a hotel, you know, and not get the 1.3, because when you get the hotel, you're going to get a lot more than the 1.3. So that's why that one-time only, and they need to know that. I mean, it's on there. Dennis and I talked about it. You know, I think it tells them, this is it, folks. And you two groups need to come back to us in 90 days and tell us what you're going to do. And oh, by the way, if you don't do it, we're going to get our money.
All right. So any other questions before we move on? Again, if folks generally feel that there's consensus, if people feel comfortable moving to a vote tonight, then we will keep it on the calendar and move to a vote tonight. I think that they would prefer that. Yes, Commissioner Muggia?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious. I'm assuming that $1.3 million is the estimate at this point. It is 1%, but if you use $1.3 million and divide that by 12 months, it's about a little over $100,000 a month. We're talking about a difference of $300,000 for a casino to go through kind of this trouble to ask for a contract amendment. I'm just curious, and you may have said it, but I probably missed it. Why all of this for $300,000? I'm just curious, from a casino perspective.
It's not a monthly penalty.
I'm sorry, Commissioner. I'm not tracking the 300,000.
It's not prorated. They pay 1.3.
There's not a waiver? There's not a waiver of-
Full amount, right away?
Yes, ma'am. There is not a waiver of the penalty. The penalty remains intact in full force. We're simply slipping by 90 days the enforcement date.
So the, on the enforcement date, you, if we stay with this original agreement, you, we need to get a check for 1 point or whatever 1% is.
That's right.
Soon after through the legal process, but yes.
Okay.
And then we would receive, if they fail next February to start, then we receive another 1.3 million or whatever that 1% number is for that time period. So it's ongoing.
Did we negotiate $300,000 for the extension? I'm just asking.
So you're proposing to increase it to 1.5?
No. I'm saying, and then if they don't, they can pay the remainder. I was just curious.
Commissioner, if the Commission gives direction, we can certainly negotiate any, any matter. Again, I think it goes to kind of a basic, simple structure. They're going to owe us 1.3 if they, if they fail to make the commitment in May. And that remains the amount that we would have received. And just point out again, by the time Commission gets it into the budget process, begins the allocation, we contend that you, you don't have an actual loss of working capital. It's rather temporarily deferred until May, which we'd pick it up, the full amount up then.
Right. I, I'm not arguing paying them, you know, getting more money from them. I was just saying, it's, you know, in the scheme of things for a casino, it would seem like it would be a nominal amount of money, but that's fine. That's fine.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners?
So based on the consensus that I see here, we will keep it on the agenda for seven o'clock tonight. They will have representatives here. If you do have any questions specific for them, and we can go from there. All right? Before we conclude our meeting, I do want to recognize Chief Allen Hanson is here, our new interim Chief of Police. Chief Hanson, welcome. Good to have you here. He's just sworn in on Monday and is here for six months, so we appreciate your leadership in our community. All right, we are now ready for a motion to go into executive session concerning litigation. And how long do you anticipate we will need to make that motion for?
I would say an hour.
Okay, for one hour. Is there such a motion?
It's been moved.
Seconded.
It has been moved and seconded to go into the executive session for litigation for one hour. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned to executive session. We will be back here at seven o'clock for our regular meeting.